America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Faunce.
May I please have the privilege, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Aretha Franklin tonight. You know, she attended the King's Day here and played the piano and we all enjoyed her and we're all going to miss her.
We will now have a moment of silence for Mr. Aretha Franklin.
Mr. Chair, I was also asked if we could have a moment of silence for John McCain, Senator McCain. The governor did announce today that flags in Michigan, although usually it's federal government, would be lowered. Since the federal government didn't do that, Governor Snyder did.
All right, we'll now also have a moment of silence for Senator John McCain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We will now move to presentations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're being, you're giving, getting a package of material that I'll be referencing in this presentation. I'm Karen Schrock from the Commission on Senior Adults. I would like to ask other members of COSA who are here in the audience to just stand so that you can see them as well as Rhonda Terry, who is our liaison from Human Services. So these are the people you've appointed. Thank you for the opportunity to keep you updated on the progress of the Southfield Commission on Senior Adults. Since our presentation in January, we've continued to address the needs of senior adults in our city. We have several requests of council and the mayor related to our work on creating an age-friendly community in Southfield. First, we would like you to endorse the request to the next governor to make Michigan an age-friendly state, and I refer you to the attached paper from AARP. There's a cover letter and a statement on what an age-friendly state would do. Second, we would like you to attend one of our community conversations and provide input on how we can become more age-friendly. The third community conversation is scheduled for Wednesday, September 12th. All members of the audience are also invited, six to eight here at the Southfield Pavilion. And I did put a copy of a flyer for that event in your packet as well. And for members of the public who are here, there are flyers out at the entrance. Third, we'd like you to encourage interested members of the business community or medical professionals to join COSA as members. And fourth, we'd like you to encourage members of the community to join in our work as we develop the age-friendly plan through work on one of our eight domain groups. Highlights of our work this year include the following. We've continued to meet monthly and we include presentations by community stakeholders who describe resources they provide to Southfield residents. Examples of those stakeholder presentations thus far include World Medical Relief, Crime Stoppers, St. John Providence Health System, and our very own Mayor Seiger. In addition to our regular meetings, in June, we held our first retreat in many years with many members of the public involved to plan our work over the next year. Members of the public assisted COSA in setting and aligning our strategic priorities based on the input we've received from our community conversations. We were joined by a representative from the Michigan AARP chapter who helped us with the big picture. We were also assisted in the process by a trained facilitator who helped us organize our information for our next steps. We've been joined by new members who have infused COSA with new expertise and energy. I described COSA as small but mighty when I presented in January. We are still small with only 11 members. We are mightier. We have continued progress on our age-friendly work with the community conversations, domain group meetings, and other outreach to the community. We've participated in an age-friendly task force convened by AARP Michigan to advocate with the next administration to designate Michigan as an age-friendly state. We submitted our first annual report to AARP Michigan on our accomplishments during our first year. I've included that report in your packet. I have also included the first four toolkits that have been developed by AARP nationally for you to see, and if you'd like more of these for any purpose, just let me know. And lastly, we revised the COSA brochure, and this may seem like a small thing, but it isn't. And we are proud of this new brochure, and I want to also acknowledge the special assistance from Mike Mannion. In all of our publications, this flyer for our community conversation, this brochure, we send him material and it comes back looking just beautifully. Our future plans include recruiting three additional members to bring COSA to its full 15 members, developing the plan, so this time next year, we'll have our plan for an age-friendly Southfield, participating subject to your endorsement in the statewide effort to pursue and implement an age-friendly Michigan, and educating elected officials and policymakers like you on the needs of senior adults. Respectfully submitted by COSA members, Karen Schrock, Chairperson, Kendell Murphy, Vice Chair David Walker, Secretary, Earlene Trailer Neal, Marilyn Hager, Latina Denson, Mitchell Simon, Sarah Habbo, Beatrice Thomas, Denise Stewart, and Cheryl Walker. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schrock. Very wonderful report, and I've been a supporter of COSA since my first day on council, and I think I attended one of your sessions that dealt with making Southfield an age-friendly city, and I'm 100% supportive of that. That means a lot to our citizens and it means a lot to the future of the city of Southfield. And I thank you for graciously coming and giving your report, which is very informative and in-depth.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add that because of the work of COSA, I was one of the mayor's invited on August 3rd to go to Michigan Headquarters, ARP Headquarters, to serve on a panel. They're doing a documentary along with the mayor of Jackson and East Lansing, and it was really because of what, under Ms. Schrock's leadership, has started here and the, and the commission that my invitation, the invitation was extended. I was glad to spend a morning up at the AARP Headquarters.
Thank you so much for taking time to do that.
Mr. Chaffers.
Mr. Frazier.
I'd like to say thank you to one of my neighbors, longtime neighbor. I've been thinking, and I should have contacted you earlier, but there are an awful lot of seniors that are living alone in their homes, and they may not have any family near, or they may not be close to other people in their neighborhood. And I was suggesting that maybe it would be an idea for COSA to at least investigate what it would take to have like a calling tree or adopt a, adopt a senior to just call maybe once a week to find out if they're still doing okay, or if they have a problem, or is there something that maybe you could refer to the city that here's a, one of your residents that has a, an issue that perhaps, you know, they need something that maybe one of our other committees could handle.
That's something that we have looked at, and I really appreciate you raising it so that members of the public are aware that we have a number of seniors in this community who are isolated, and if we're going to be age-friendly, we have to make sure that we reach out to them. So there are two domain groups that are looking at that. Certainly, health and community services is looking at that, as well as respect and social inclusion. So we will be looking at that issue of isolation and seeing what we can do with the capacity. We'll be trying to engage volunteers in that process. There are many organizations that do that with volunteers, so I really appreciate you bringing that up, and we are going to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your support.
That's a presentation by Ms. Schrock as part of a program that council started. I've asked Mr. Cruz to reach out to all our boards and commissions to have them make a presentation to council for the benefit of council and also for the benefit of our citizens to know what our boards, our various boards and commissions are doing to support the city and to support the mission of the city. We will now have another presentation by, I'm sorry, presentation or proclamation
Good evening, council and members of the public. I'm here this evening with Mrs. Roberta Cotman, one of my neighbors, and we have a presentation, or proclamation rather, on Women's Equality, Equality Day, August 26th, 2018. Whereas women's suffrage movement started before the Civil War, however, it would take until August 26th, 1920, for the U.S. Congress to add the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution granting women the right to vote. And whereas, generated because of lower wages, poor working conditions, limited opportunities for women in the workplace, the women's right movement united women across the United States in a peaceful campaign to fight for equal rights and privileges which were available to male citizens. And whereas, because of millions of women who planned, organized, marched, petitioned, and lobbied, every field of business and labor changed the world for generations of women to receive better working conditions, fair wages, and equal rights. And whereas, the month of August is annually declared the month to highlight the contributions of women to the events in history and modern-day society, women such as Kate Mulaney, the organizer of the first all-female labor union, Maggie Lena Walker, the first African-American woman in the United States to charter a bank, and Norman, Norma, rather, Jaeger, the first woman stockholder to be permitted on the floor of the United States, or rather, the New York Stock Exchange, as well as many others. And whereas, in commemoration of the passage of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution granting women the right to vote, we recognize and commend the women who led the peaceful campaign granting women the right to vote. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kenson Seiger, Mayor of the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim August 26th as Women's Equality Day in the city of Southfield and encourage the residents and businesses of Southfield to reflect and celebrate the diverse and historic accomplishments of women to the equality of life in our community. And I'll present this to Ms. Cotman.
Let me add one name to the list that you've already heard from the mayor from Michigan. Sojourna Truth. Sojourna Truth, an advocate, an advocate for abolition as well as for the rights of women. And speaking to the representatives in Ohio, she proclaimed, "Ain't I a woman?" Sojourna Truth, whose stature is in Battle Creek, Michigan, whose home is in Battle Creek, Michigan, and we add that name to the list. Today is more than just a ceremony. It speaks to the rights of women, and we recognize the past, but indeed, we must give credit to now and today. With the inherent rights of women, beginning with health. Health is the first priority. Number two, the whole issue of economics in regards to poverty. Number three is the whole aspect of food security. The whole issue of clean air. The whole issue of the human right and access to water that we cannot live without. The whole issue of aging and living with chronic illness and disability. The whole issue of education that begins from the cradle to the grave. The whole issue of the survival of public education threatened in this country. The whole issue of celebrating our diversity, racism, sexism, harassment, human trafficking, equality of human rights and their civil rights, the right to environment, the right of women and girls in the area of work, but most of all, the right to peace. The right to live in the kind of environment that promotes nonviolence as well as the right to peace. And so, my friends, I issue an appeal to you today. Maybe these issues don't reach our small world here in Southfield yet, but bordering on Eight Mile Road, we are no longer immune. And therefore, I issue an appeal. In its 60th year, that the city council of Southfield seek to create a commission on the status of women. In recognition of our historical heritage and the inherent needs and the human rights of women and girls and the fundamental values of a democratic society, I ask you to consider this appeal. We will be meeting with the chair of the legislative committee, Mr. Frazier, in regards to this appeal and continuing this appeal in the name of women, the mothers of the races. In the name of our daughters and our granddaughters and our aunts and our sisters, I appeal to
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say that, thank you very much, Ms. Cotman, for all that you've done for the city of Southfield. This is the 98th anniversary for the women's right to vote, and I just want us to remember that fundamental right and exercise that on November the 6th. As an elected official and as a woman, I am so encouraged to see all of the young women that are out here that have ran the race, that joined in the fight, entered into the election, and won their race. Now they just need your vote to continue in November. So we've come a long way as women, but we still have a long way to go. Let us not forget that, and I would encourage all of us to go out and vote on November the 6th. Thank you.
Okay. All right, before we go further, there were a pair of glasses left in this study session. They're, have diamonds on the side here.
Mine.
Yours?
No.
They will be placed with the clerk, and after tonight, I assume we have a lost and found here in the city, that individual can come and get them. We will now recognize our city treasurer.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, honorable elected officials. I'd like to call forward our current deputy treasurer, Kathy Hicks, please. Ms. Hicks has been a dedicated employee for the city of Southfield for over 29 years, and it's bittersweet that I announced that her retirement upcoming in the month of September, but I feel that it's a small part of, to be able to recognize her, her time over here at the city of Southfield, especially coming on the back of, we're just talking about women's equality and empowerment of women. And I'm proud to say that Ms. Hicks has been a tremendous role model and has been a person that's been a mentor, and I have a proclamation from us that's not, it's basically an appreciation of her dedicated service and also a plaque, but I'd like to read this to everyone. Kathy R. Hicks, in honor of your dedicated service, 1989 to 2018, to our special friend and colleague, Kathy R. Hicks, who has served the city of Southfield for 29 years as public safety technician, cashier, finance aide, tax technician, treasurer's coordinator, and deputy city treasurer. We do hereby recognize and thank you for your exceptional work and paramount dedication to the city of Southfield, its residents, staff, and business partners throughout the years. As you start the next chapter of your life, know that you will be sorely missed. We will miss your professional expertise, mentorship, and friendship. You have left your indelible mark. This is truly, this truly is the end of a remarkable era, and the city of Southfield is better because of you. Presented to you with recognition this 27th day of August, 2018, at the regularly scheduled city council meeting held in council chambers in the city of Southfield. This is a plaque for you as well. Please.
It's bittersweet, for real, bittersweet. September 19th, it will be 29 years. It's been a good ride. We have a great staff here, there's some good people here, there's some good people Have a good support team. Appreciate Mr. Laurenberg, the city for giving me the opportunity to progress here and grow. When I first started, we had orange carpet in the department, there was no internet. We used to take the tax bills over to data processing, and they would show pay the next day. So a lot has changed, immediacy, being show paid immediately. I wish the city well and just want to say thank you.
Do you have individuals with you here that you'd like to recognize? You can have them come down and stand with you.
A whole team of people here that I need to recognize, my staff, my family. Stand up, stand up. And I have a group of close friends here as well, a group of close friends here as well. So, thank you all.
Well, Kathy, Kathy, you have one, one other item, as a, as a 29-year employee, you gotta walk the wall of pain to come by your [inaudible].
Mr. Chairman. The one standing, come on up and take your picture. Come on up here, come on.
Anybody who want to come down.
Young lady there.
Come on, Don.
Come on.
Don, come on, we're gonna shake her hand.
I know I shake her hand.
How you doing? Good, good, good. Thank you.
You've changed.
Yeah, a lot of change.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Hi, hi.
I tell you, I'm a good kicker. Best job in the world. Good to meet you. Congratulations.
Seen a lot of change.
Trying to think who, who was the treasurer in 29? Was it Roman?
Had to be. Well, I don't know. He was the only one I knew that, 24 years.
So I'd like to request the opportunity to present a candidate I'd like to bring forward as new deputy treasurer upcoming. Ms. Allison Bettis is a Southfield resident for over 25 years, and she's had over 35 years of municipal finance experience. Been over 20 years, 20 years at the city of, of Garden City as their clerk and treasurer, and she also was deputy treasurer at the city of Oak Park prior to, also Highland Park. And she brings a wealth of experience with her and feel that she, I mean, of course, it's going to be very, very difficult to fill the shoes of Kathy Hicks, but someone that I feel confident that will help us in the city and help us progress, and I'd like to present her before the city council.
Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to serve the city of Southfield. Thank you, Kathy, for leaving a legacy of excellence that I can follow, and thank you for your confidence in me and the opportunity to serve.
All right.
So we're here by asking city council for approval pending background checks from the police department, but this was But, uh, this way, uh, Ms. Bettis will be able to allow for proper notification of her current employer and, uh, and start preparing for making, uh, changes in employment to here.
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve the appointment of Ms. Allison Bettis to the, uh, deputy treasurer of the city of Southfield, uh, pending the, the background check with the Southfield Police.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Fakasi, uh, moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Fakasi.
No, no, let him make it.
All right. It was a motion by Mr. Frazier and it was seconded by Ms. Taylor that we approve the appointment of our deputy treasurer as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms., uh, Bettis. And we, we look forward to your, to your talent. I met with you earlier, but I would like for you also to walk the, uh, the walk of pain.
Have to walk the. You didn't tell me that part.
I would think. Yeah, perfunctory. Yeah, but it's, we did it because.
Bless you. Thanks having you aboard.
Yeah.
She, she'll learn that. Okay. The next item on our agenda, uh, we have some, uh, the regular meeting minutes of July thirty, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cruz.
I'd like to move approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the minutes of July third, two thousand eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The minutes are approved as presented. I will now present the, uh, consent agenda item of our program. Now I would like to encourage all our listeners and individuals, uh, who, who are able to, um, go to the clerk site on our internet because I will just give the highlights. I will only speak to the highlights and also the, uh, potential fiscal, uh, uh, results of these particular items that we are approving, are approving. Consent agenda item A, the appointment to Southfield Joint LDFA Authority pursuant to the local development, pursuant to the Local Development Financing Act. I, I hereby present for confirmation to the Southfield LDF, LDF, LDFA Authority, Mr. Austin Michaels, Director of the Fiscal Services for the, for the city of Southfield. Mr. Michaels' turn will be effective through August twenty-seventh, two, twenty-twenty-three. Consent agenda item B, the Franklin Athletic Club Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda between, uh, Franklin Athletic Club and the city of Southfield rendered by this Oakland County Circuit Court on August thirty, on August thirteenth, nineteen seventy-five, is modified in nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight, nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-seven, and May of nineteen eighty-eight be further modified as follows. The plaintiff, uh, Franklin Athletic Club, may replace the existing textured finish and wood sightings with UC dash five oh one Revell Seamed Core Coated Steel Panel Siding in a medium bronze finish. The next item, that to the extent modifications set forth herein differs from those materials required by the consent judgment or the site plan previously on file in this matter, the party is hereby stipulated and agreed to waive those requirements and permit the, the modifications that sets forth herein only. No other material terms of the consent judgment or plan shall be modified by this order. Consent agenda item C, Resolution Establishing Administration and Enforcement Fees, Chapter one oh five. On May twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, the city council approved and adopted an apartment inspection ordinance, Section eight dash seven oh seven of the ordinance expressly provided that the registration, inspection, and related fees involved in the city administration and enforcement of the ordinance would be established by the city council by resolution. Be it hereby, it is recommended by administrator, be it hereby resolved that in accordance with Section eight dash seven oh seven, Fees, Chapter one oh five of the City Code, the city council does hereby approve and adopt the attached fee schedule established, establishing the fees to be assessed by the city in the administration and enforcement of Chapter one oh five of the City Code. Approval of the extension of Northland Listing Agreement with Friedman Brokerage Company. On May twenty-two, twenty, two thousand seventeen, city council approved entering into a commercial listing agreement with Friedman Brokerage Company relative to the Northland property. The agreement provided that Friedman would seek interested, qualified buyers to purchase the Northland property or parcels therein, as well as provide marketing and consulting service. The annual sum payable to Friedman amounted to eighty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. The agreement was for one year period, expired July thirty-one, two thousand eighteen. Thereafter, on July thirty, twenty eighteen, city council approved a sixty-day extension of the listing agreement with Friedman during the Friedman, during, during which time Friedman engaged in developing a new cost structure proposal to the city, which will focus more on consulting portion of the services as well as the continued listing of the property for sale. The new Friedman cost proposal would amount to a total fixed sum of seventy-eight thousand dollars, which is the, which is an annual saving of ten thousand, two hundred dollars to the city. Consent agenda item E, Credit Card Policy. On July eighth, nineteen ninety-six, the honorable body, this honorable body adopted credit card policy for conducting city of Southfield business in compliance with the Michigan Public Act two sixty-six of nineteen ninety-five, MCLA one two nine two four three. Since that time, credit card usage for the city business has expanded and evolved with the current nature of electronic business. Suggested revisions to the existing policy are any, are an effort by the administration to enhance user accountability, increase security, and increase efficiencies in purchasing and reporting. The proposed revisions were previously presented to the Council Finance Committee. It was consensus of the Finance Committee to bring the proposed policy to the, policy to the council for approval. The fiscal impact of this, increase accountability and efficiency in procurement and reporting in accordance with the city policy. It is recommended that the city council adopt a revised Southfield credit card policy. Consent agenda item F, Authorization to Contract Vision Insurance Services with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, Blue Vision. Background, the city of Southfield offers a comprehensive background, um, the city of Southfield offers a comprehensive benefit package to career employees including medical, dental, and vision insurance coverages. Coverages can be, can include the employees and certain eligible dependent. For over thirty years, our vision insurance coverage has been with, provided by Aetna under, under what was originally set up to under a then typical usual and customary coverage format. Recently, Aetna acknowledged its inability to properly administer this plan and indicated they will terminate the plan by the end of this year. Through our benefit consultant, we have researched and selected Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan Vision Plan, the Blue Vision is a replacement vision insurance provider. This plan is widely used and has very robust suite of benefits. Because this takes several weeks to implement the new plan, we are proposing that the new Blue Cross Blue Shield Vision Plan be effective October one, twenty eighteen for non-union retired and police command employees. Fiscal impact, as both the Aetna and Blue Cross Blue Shield Vision Insurance Program are self-insured, the city has and will pay the claims cost plus administrative fees for this benefit, while the actual fiscal impact would depend on claims submitted and properly paid. Consent agenda item G, Authorization to Purchase One Hundred Foot Ladder Truck and Four Fire Engines. Background, at the city council meeting on April sixteen, twenty eighteen, the city council unanimously approved the fiscal twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three capital improvement program, submitted by the planning department, reviewed by the council finance committee, and recommended by the planning commission. Included in the CIP were fire replacement fiery trucks, one ladder truck, and four engine pumpers. Based on discussions with the vendor, purchase prices will increase by four point five percent on September eighteenth, and lead time for the vehicle is approximately three hundred forty-five days from the date of order. Given the potential cost increase in time horizon, we are requesting council to authorize the replacement of all five engines to look, to lock in current prices, pricing, and to ensure delivery within the scope of the approved CIP. Delivery will be expected in the early part of fiscal year twenty twenty, with payment expected two weeks after delivery. Fiscal impact, these purchases total two million nine hundred and six dollars in nine, two million nine hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Funding is available in the Equipment Revolving Fund. Consent agenda item H, Authorization to Replace Vehicles for the Fire Department. Council gave authorization within the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget to purchase two replacement vehicles for the fire department. Each proposed replacement vehicle has been reviewed in terms of mileage and repair history. The fiscal impact of this will be expenditure total one hundred thousand dollars. Funding will be provided from the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Equipment Revolving Fund. Two vehicles recommended for replacement, a twenty nineteen GMC twenty-five hundred heavy-duty totaling fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and a twenty eighteen GMC one five zero zero totaling forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for a grand total of one hundred thousand dollars. Trucks will be purchased from the Todd Wizzo Buick GMC of Westland. Consent agenda item I, Authorization to Purchase Replacement Hurst Extraction Rescue Tool, parentheses, the jaws of life. Council gave authorization within the fiscal twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget to purchase an updated replacement set of battery-operated rescue tools. The single set of rescue tools will be replaced, will replace the second of five sets of fire equipment, fire department houses on their fire engines. The current tools are approximately twenty years old and powered by a separate gas line-driven power plant. The new units are quicker to deploy and the individual cutter spread of components can be operated concurrently, allowing more expedient victim recovery, removal. The fiscal impact of this, these expenditures were totaled twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine thousand dollars, and funding will be provided from the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Fire Department Operating Suppliers, Supplies Account. The equipment will be purchased from Apollo Fire Equipment in Romeo, Michigan. It should be noted that Apollo Fire is the sole source dealer for this equipment in our geographical region, and, and we have previously used them to purchase the same equipment in fiscal seventeen eighteen. Consent agenda item J, Modification of Appointment to the, to the Southeast Oakland Water Authority, SACWA. Our city administrators requesting authorization to modify the previous appointment and recommend the following individuals to more appropriately represent the city for the fiscal year July one, two thousand eighteen through June thirty, twenty nineteen. The representative will be Larry Surles, Public Works Operations Manager, and the alternate will be Lee Schultz, our city engineer. Fiscal impact, there are no costs associated with these appointments. Recommended, it is respectfully requested that council confirm these appointments by adoption of the resolution herein provided. And this will be for the fiscal year July one, two thousand eighteen through June thirty, two thousand nineteen. Consent agenda item J, Discussion of Resolution Opposing Small Wireless Communication Legislation. The Legislative Committee is requesting council consideration of a resolution supporting opposition to South Senate Bill zero six three seven, which is currently under consideration in the Michigan Senate. Senate Bill zero six three seven would grant telecommunications providers a number of rights, impose numerous obligations on the city, and significantly preempt city regulations on the replacement of these facilities. It is recommended, please find a, a proposed resolution opposing Senate Bill zero six three seven, which the Legislative Committee is requesting the city council to approve. If council is in agreement, I will ask that this, I will ask that this, that you adopt the attached resolution. We will now go to Consent Agenda Item L. Purchase of High-Speed Voting Equipment for Absentee Ballots. In June, in January of twenty seventeen, Secretary of State, the Secretary of State Office approved new election equipment for the state of Michigan to replace the present outdated equipment throughout the state of Michigan. In this, in the statewide primary held earlier this month, the city of Southfield recorded a record turnout. Early projections showed that the voter turnout in November for the general election would be a record turnout as well. The fiscal impact of this particular request is the cost of the high-speed tabulator approximately, for the high-speed tabulator approximately eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Currently, the clerk office budget has enough money allocated to purchase the high-speed tabulator. It is recommended that council authorize the city clerk to purchase the high-speed tabulator and voting equipment. Funding is provided in the clerk's budget and shall not exceed eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Council, those are the consent agenda items as read.
President. I'd like to move approval of consent agenda items A through L.
Mr. Porter.
It was moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve consent agenda items A through L as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. We are now.
Um, Mr. President, um, there is a representative here from, um, Senator Stabenow's office.
Right.
Who was supposed to be part of the Women's Equality Day presentation. I thought that, um, Ms. Kotman was going to call upon him. So I'd ask that you recognize Jeremy Marley.
Okay. Jeremy, uh, give us your name and, and business address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of staff. Um, my name is Jeremy Marley from. My name is Jeremy Marley from Senator Debbie Stabenow's office. Apologize for missing the presentation before. I just have, the senator can't be here tonight, she's in Washington, but she asked me to come and present a certificate of congressional recognition to the city to thank you for honoring Women's Equality Day. As was mentioned, it took 144 years before our country gave women the right to vote, and here we are 98 years later, as Councilwoman Taylor pointed out. 98 years later, in a year that many are calling the Year of the Woman, but where, a year where women still make 82 cents for every dollar that a male earns. So it's very important that we continue the progress that we've made over those long 98 years and keep moving forward with it. I also wanted to take a moment to thank, I think they all left, everybody working on the Senior Commission. I know all of the communities around here are looking at ways to age in place and make it easier for people to age in place, and congrats on the 29-year retirement. I can't wait for my own 29-year retirement. But back on topic, yeah, 98 years, and women are still making 82 cents on the dollar. We have a lot of work still to do, despite this being the quote-unquote Year of the Woman. So the senator just wanted to say thank you to the city for honoring women's equality, for helping to celebrate Women's Equality Day, and all of the work that we still need to do. So I just would like to present this certificate, and Mr. Chairman, thank you again.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you. Okay, we'll move further on. There's no public hearing, no site planned, and we will get into the communications. First person to be rec, well, let me just mention that you will have three minutes. First person would be Dubray Newman. Next person recognized would be Ms. Gerald.
Good evening, residents at home watching the meeting. You know who I am. For almost 35 years, I've been your independent voice, and I humbly accept that title that you guys have given me, and I'm always honored when you trust me to resolve your issues. You know, we have an organization that was newly formed so that people would be able to give to the boy and the bear or free the bear campaign, and the name of that organization is the Friends of the Southfield Police. I mean, the Friends of the Southfield Public Art, because we do have a nonprofit, Friends of the Southfield Police as well. Now, I'm concerned about the fact that the mayor, the city of Southfield mayor, filed Articles of Incorporation in his name as the incorporator. Myron Frazier, you would be interested in this form because he used the city's address, 26,000 Evergreen Road, but he got the zip code wrong. The zip code to the city, I think, is 48076, not 48037. That's my P.O. Box zip code, so I know it's not the city's. So this is basically a ploy so that I believe that the mayor can use his status to raise money, to give people a tax deduction, but if you're able to do that, why can't you raise money for 911? Why can't you raise money to give the employees a raise? I think it's a conflict of interest, what you're doing, using your position, and soliciting people that have deals before the city. Now, a legal opinion, is he able to do that? Is the mayor of the city able to enter into a service agreement, which we haven't seen? We don't know what it's about. We don't know what it says. All we can assume is that this agreement allows this organization, since the city can't do it, to acquire, repair, and restore, move, and install the Northland art. I think that this is a bad thing, but I want to say something to you, Mr. Mayor. It's called self-dealing. The conduct of a trustee, attorney, corporation, officer, or other fiduciary that consists of taking advantage of his position in a transaction and acting in his own interest rather than the interests of the beneficiaries of the trust, corporation, shareholders, or client. The city should not be in the real estate business, you should not be in the art business, and there's other things that you should be trying to work on, like developing Northland and putting all this art all over the city. City of diversity, not city of art, is what we're called, the All-American City. I'd like a legal opinion, if I could get one.
Next person to recognize is Mr. Mullin.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Tonight, I'd like to talk about Section 5.9. Section 5.9 in the Southfield City Charter. 5.9 is entitled "Deputies of Clerk and Treasurer." Section 5.9 states that the deputies shall possess all the powers of their designated superior officer, these powers limited only by their superior officer or by the city council. I am troubled by the latter phrase, and I quote, "or by the city council," unquote. This phrase generates two problems. First, how is it possible for a deputy to have two, yes, two, two bosses, two separate bosses, each who can limit a deputy's power independently of the other boss? This begs the question, which boss is superior? That is, whose orders does the deputy obey? Is or her superior, or the council? Also, how would a chain-of-command chart look like? And secondly, how can a deputy of an independent officer, that is elected by the voters, be controlled by an outside entity, in this case, the city council? As you can see, to make things right, the phrase, and I quote, "or by the city council," needs to be deleted from Section 5.9. Section 5.9 of the charter, the city charter, the Southfield City Charter. In a word, you folks need to just fix the damn charter.
Next person to be recognized would be Mr. Gilliam.
Good afternoon, City Council. It's a pleasure to stand before you. My name is Charlie Gilliam, elected precinct delegate from down in the city of Southfield for over 20 years. Reason I come to you, first thing I'd like to say, I give my sympathy also to the late queen of soul, Ms. Aretha Franklin, a resident from our one-armed neighboring city that's not far from us. A few years back, Mrs. Franklin thought so much of Southfield, to the Southfield, how safe it is, that less than a five-minute walk from here to Northwestern Highway, and we sit out front, Evergreen, out front. It's at Evergreen. Well, anyway, that's where they worked on her movie. She sat in and watched many auditions right on that corner, less than a five-minute walk from here. She thought it was safe enough that, you know, that's my own words, to have it here. Also, when that Flint water deal went down, she thought enough of our city of Southfield to put some of those people up right here, less than a five-minute walk, right off Northwestern Highway, and right out front, it's at Evergreen, where, anyway, she thought that much of our city. So my hat's off to her. She was a really nice lady, done things that people don't even know about. Also, Mr. Hawkins, we will miss our city of Southfield police chief, who, from what I understand, I was reading in the paper, I couldn't get too much information because, you know, the short notice, but I think he had 45 days before somebody, you know, was finalized. And he's homegrown, and he made sure when he was here that our police officers had everything that made them safe. You know, like the latest equipment that would keep them safe, like ties on, that we don't even think about. You get out there in that winter with them bawling ties on, chasing some fool out there going 100 miles an hour. We made sure they had, in other words, I'd never seen a police officer from Southfield out there changing a tie. We made sure they had brand-new ties in the winter, and they had, you know, updated equipment like vests, new police vehicles, weapons, et cetera. He made sure they had everything to operate, and I hope the next person to come along makes sure this man get that. On Election Day, August 7, like there was, all persons, we, I didn't think that our clerk could handle that new clerk, but she came through in flying colors. We had one of the largest turnouts right here in the city of Southfield, and she came through. There were no long lines in our precinct. You can walk right in, come out in about 15 minutes, but were no complaints out here. So she's all right with me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is my first time, so I got to read, I can't see very well. So first off, I want to thank all of you up there for all of your service, your dedication, and your caring for our city. Second, a special thanks to the youngster of the group, Mayor Fercassi. I believe since '67 or '68, you have given so much of yourself to our city, so thank you so, so much, young man. Thanks to all that helped pass the ordinance number 1692. We needed it so badly. So many are not being treated fairly by management companies and owners in apartments. There's so many people now, a lot of people, that live in apartments in the city of Southfield that don't know about the new ordinance. It is so very important that somehow, some way, the word gets out to them. I learned about it from a coffee class meeting held once a month by our state representative, Jeremy Moss. I, for one, have been waiting for over two years for repairs. Thanks to this new ordinance and the hard-working building department led by Diane Mark and their staff, I am starting to get some results. I sure hope they can finally get me a handicap parking place in front of my apartment building. I have only been waiting since January of 2018 for that. Is there any chance that our city could have a gun buyback program? I have called and left a message for the chief but have not heard back. I know he's a very busy man. I'd like to give much thanks and appreciation to the great police and fire departments of Southfield. Thank you all for your great service and sacrifice. And then lastly, I'd like to thank everybody in the audience for caring about our great city.
Thank you, Mr. Breaker. Next person to be recognized would be Mr. Bunker.
Fred Bunker, 24201 Garner. Hello, how are you? I've got several letters asking me to sell my property, asking me to not sell my property, starting with Fred Zorn, who in 2014 asked me to contact the city if I ever planned to sell my property, which I did, and I've not heard back from him. He says if I ever plan to sell property, don't hesitate to contact him. He's hard to contact, Mr. Zorn. You're very hard to get a hold of. Since 2014, I've been trying to sell my property. Then I find in, last fall, Mr. Seiver created, uh-oh, I got confused here, oh, okay, I'm getting older. Allow me. I prepared too long. Returning to the topic of Beechwoods Hamlet, Mr. Seiver writes, April 16 of this year, "Last fall, I had numerous conversations with several of the owners of properties on Garner Street. I have kept the Beechwoods Hamlet plan all these years. On behalf of the city, I made an offer to purchase their properties. The offer was based on what the city assessor believed was a pair of price for acreage. Unfortunately, the owners countered with an extremely high price. We weren't even close." Is the mayor authorized to buy property? Does anybody know? Does anybody know if the mayor's authorized to buy residential property? Already showed in a plan we adopted, or we failed to adopt when Mr. Frazier was council president, and a vote of three to three defeated the motion of how to zone for this Beechwoods Hamlet plan. Not to defeat the zoning, not to defeat the plan to build on 43 acres, but to decide which way we would zone it. The vote was three to three. Mr. Frazier, the council president at the time, announced a three-to-three vote, killed the motion, and we never proceeded with the Beechwoods Hamlet, because he should have recused himself. He lives a quarter mile from the development. He didn't want his neighborhood to change. He had personal reasons to vote against the Beechwoods Hamlet development, and because he didn't recuse himself and Mr. Seiver stayed home, the vote was three to three. We don't have an attorney, we don't have Sue Ward here, who ordered an appraisal on my property in '09. Mr. Seiver, why are you buying property and not asking me to sell mine? Who are the residents you spoke to on Garner? Laughing? The president, the mayor thinks this is a laughing matter. For the permanent record, I'm embarrassed and humiliated to have to bring myself down to his level. Where are these properties being purchased on Garner? And who is authorized to purchase them?
Thank you, Mr. Garner. Mr. Bunker. The next person to be recognized is Stephanie Palmer. Is Ms. Palmer here?
I'm going to read as well. That way I don't take up too much time. Good evening, council and residents. I sent everyone on council, including Mr. Zorn, a very detailed email last night, and I will basically read from that so that everyone here will know where I'm coming from. At the June 4, 2018, City Council meeting, GFL promised a litany of things to the City Council and residents of Southfield. Since they have assumed the contract from Rizzo, the service has been beyond deplorable. We have listened to excuses, we saw a presentation, we have heard reasons, we've gotten promises, we even read an apology and promise field letter on the front page of our paper. Yet, things remain the same, if not have gotten worse. As of right now, today marks three weeks that there are branch and tree clippings that are properly placed in my subdivision and the neighboring one. I, along with other residents of the city, have continued to call the Department of Public Works to report the issues, and recently I had to escalate my complaints to the supervisor when the gentleman, Robert, told me that the... to the supervisor when the gentleman, Robert, told me that the pickup had indeed occurred and that GFL was no longer driving unsafely, meaning down the middle of the street or zigzagging down the street. I explained to him that I was looking at the trash, and I had pictures and video, and he had no response. The supervisor returned the call and told me that the waste had been removed the previous day by the GFL supervisor, per my call the previous day. I told her that indeed was not the case, because I was standing in front of one of the houses. I then proceeded to give her over twelve addresses that I passed on my way home that had not been picked up in two weeks. She said someone out to check and called me back and said that the chipper would not be out until the following week, and made a point to note that my area, Area eleven, had more return visits from GFL than any other area in the city, and they didn't have the resources to keep coming back out. This would not be an issue if they would do their job properly the first time around. I have over twenty pictures now from neighbors who have sent pictures to me from missed pickups today, uh, bins blocking the roads and the driveways, and that's just from today. I, too, have made calls to Mr. Zorn's office since the end of June. They have gone unreturned, and I want to know what the next action is that this council plans to take on working, working to open bids and nullify the contract of GFL. They are being paid to do a job, and frankly, if anyone in this room or watching on TV in the sound of my voice did their job half as poorly, you would be unemployed. They need to be as well. Thank you.
Next person to be recognized would be Mr. Toby Rhodes.
Toby Rhodes, uh, one-seven-zero-zero-one, New Jersey, um, two-four-eight-five-six-nine-seven-one-eight-nine. Um, once again, I hate being here, um, and I'm talking to five years in the future, like I did back in two thousand and thirteen, because it doesn't seem like anybody listens here. Um, there's a, a real problem with, uh, Southfield. I noticed that the, the decline started after the financial collapse in oh-nine, or oh-eight. It just seemed like city services have just gotten worse and worse and worse, and I've noticed that, um, the amenities and public goods that are available in the city have been deteriorating since that time. Uh, the prime example of that is Northland. I remember I noticed in two thousand and eleven, when I was dealing with the, the misery and grief that I was going through with the police department of the city of Southfield, that no one seemed responsive, no one seemed to care, and everyone seemed to think that they were doing a great job and that there wasn't any reason to have any alarm or concern. But I noticed at the time that when you have a, a city administration that is that unresponsive and that incompetent, that you're going to have a disaster coming. I saw that in two thousand and eleven, but no one cared, no one seemed to listen. Of course, you lost Northland, and Northland is basically the identity of Southfield. Southfield was put on the map by Northland, and now that identity is gone. So now Southfield's basically finished as far as, uh, its relevance in the, in the southeast Michigan, all thanks to the incompetence of the city attorney and city administrator and the city administration, especially the police department. I mean, they could have saved Northland if they wanted to, but you just chose to let it die, and so you chose to let Southfield die. And, uh, I noticed also at that time that there was this preponderance of, now, I'm going to preface this by saying that, uh, homosexuals, homosexual acts are a crime under Michigan law. It's considered a felony, and it's considered a sex crime. And yet, I'm, I'm seeing in these elections, people are voting for homosexuals, and what does a homosexual do? They destroy Northland, and now they're stealing people's homes, hitting them with that, uh, um, those septic tank issues, saying, oh, you got to get septic tanks through the city attorney. And, um, and this issue is still continuing even to this day. I mean, I, I have in my, right now in my pocket, an eight-hundred-thousand check, an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar check written by the homosexual, I mean, written by the Southfield nonprofit housing corporation, which, you know, the homosexual is a part of, um, as I would consider it blood money for stealing people's homes in Southfield. I mean, the, the excuse was that we got to steal their homes to stabilize their neighborhoods, but that doesn't make any sense, stealing people's homes. And they just keep on doing it. The goal is to keep people in their homes, not to throw them out of their homes, because that creates instability. And as time is going on, I'm collecting more and more data and more and more information, and for those people, two thousand and twenty-three, you wonder why things are the way they are. That's why you got people in the city of Southfield destroying the community as it
Saying no one else, um, for communications, we will now move to the council portion. Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I would only like to say that, uh, I miss, uh, Mr. Mantelbaum this evening because, so I don't know where, where I'm supposed to be going for the next week. I have nothing else.
All right, we have nothing on, on council. Uh, mayor?
Sure. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, just comment, uh, to set the record straight, that, um, I don't buy property in Southfield. I own my home, uh, and, uh, I have, uh, another property, but I don't buy property. I don't know what Mr. Bunker is talking about, other than, uh, one of his neighbors called and said, would the city be interested, uh, I'm thinking about selling my property on Garner Street? And as I told Mr. Bunker numerous times, as well as this resident, find a realtor. And if the city would be interested, the city, um, might look at it. There was a Beechwood Hamlet, Hamlet plan that, um, uh, failed to pass, and, uh, there's potential there to build houses because the lots are two-acre lots. But, um, certainly, there is nothing on the books, uh, to do this, and, uh, I don't, uh, buy property in Southfield. The other thing I want to comment on is, um, we, uh, the Southfield Public Arts Commission, uh, formed a nonprofit called the Friends of Southfield Public Arts, and that, uh, organization, uh, its mission is to raise money for art in Southfield. The money goes strictly to art in Southfield that's city-owned. Uh, they're also working currently on the restoration of the library fountain. Any money raised, uh, by the Friends of Southfield Public Arts will be spent in the city of Southfield on city-owned art, or the, the Friends of Southfield Public Arts will donate that art, uh, to the city, uh, just to set the record straight on both of those. Um, on Saturday, um, on a brighter topic, uh, Councilwoman Morris and I had the, um, opportunity to, uh, cut the ribbon at the Motor City Dance Factory. And, um, this is a business that I'd just like to highlight for a minute tonight. Uh, the Motor City Dance Factory was, uh, formed, uh, seventeen years ago by Camille Johnson, and, uh, Camille had a number of, um, people doubting whether she could make a go, uh, running a dance school, and, uh, she is now on her third location, um, and she's at the Southfield Research Park, uh, taking a huge part of the, uh, the building that, uh, is on Melrose and Lager Road. And, uh, she now has five hundred students, uh, in the Motor City Dance Factory. Uh, there are five studios there, uh, it's an all-new facility, and this is, um, an African-American woman, uh, who, uh, has become a very successful entrepreneur, uh, and is a, a member of our community, and it was, uh, really a very festive occasion on Saturday to, um, come down and, um, open the, the latest facility. So congratulations to, uh, uh, Camille Johnson, um, a woman who had a lot of grit, uh, and determination, came up with a business plan, convinced people to support her, and, uh, is doing extremely well. So we're, we're very glad that, uh, she has this expanded, uh, facility, uh, in our
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'd like to, uh, uh, state, uh, anybody who up on Twelve-Mile Road and, uh, and, uh, you'll see the new Farber School landscaping, what a wonderful job they have done, and I'd like council maybe to recognize that school. I mean, they just did a tremendous, tremendous drive, a large parking lot, berms, you got a hundred trees of better, and, um, it really has made that area just, uh, a wonderful area even to go by, and it really has contributed to the looks of Inglewood Park. So anyways, if we can, mayor, we could send them a letter or something on behalf of all of us.
They had nine-year-old, it looked like nine-year-olds, they're pulling those big, high sod, piles of sod. They had a big semi that delivered all those sod, put it all the way down Twelve-Mile Road, and they were putting it up till dark, those kids, and, uh, it really turned out they have a sprinkling system in, uh, they've really contributed to the betterment of that community.
Yeah, it's a great cleanup. Uh, noticed it the other day.
Well, I would like to, um, well, now, we can get a tour, a mini tour up there. I think year, a couple of year ago, we got invited to do a tour.
Yeah, we, uh, attended the open house when the school opened, and I can pass that on to the administration of Farber School.
Okay.
That you'd like to come back.
Yeah, okay. And, Mr. Administrator?
Uh, yes, um, to the council, I want to, uh, thank you, uh, for approving the new deputy treasurer. Uh, I'd also like to recognize and thank Kathy Hicks for her involvement here. The deputy treasurer's, uh, position is vital, so that is one of the vacancies that have been filled. Also, Renee Hanaosa in our IT group has been named acting director of the IT department. We have, uh, Laverne, uh, Laverne Lowery has moved on to greener pastures. We have retained Laverne to assist us in a couple IT projects that we're working to close out. The, uh, I've had a couple of people ask me about the, uh, city attorney's position, that is the mayor's appointment, and progress is being made in that arena.
Could I, uh, could, Mr. Zorn, might I interject there that, um, we did conduct interviews, and I notified the council last week, but for the sake of the public, uh, we have a candidate who's asked us to, uh, wait to reveal her name until she's informed her employer, and she'll need some transition time as she's, um, coming from a law firm and has a major, uh, case in September that she needs to conclude. But I'd also like to point out, sitting next to me is Dawn King, who, uh, has been, uh, named the acting, uh, city attorney, um, while we're in this transition period. Uh, Ms. Ward retired on, uh, Friday after thirty-five years of service.
I would also like to comment, I, I don't think it's any kind of secret, uh, our police chief has been approved as the police chief of Albany, New York. Uh, I have been informed verbally that next Tuesday will be his last day. Uh, we have two outstanding deputy chiefs. There will be an acting chief named, uh, in, in the next, uh, few days. Um, it is, uh, with a saddened heart that I, I see Eric move on, but he's a young man, and it's an incredible opportunity. Uh, so, one of the large, larger cities, and has been incredibly proactive in addressing a lot of the, uh, President Obama's twenty-first, uh, century police activities, actually the third city in the country to adopt those principles. A budget of fifty-six million, three hundred and fifty, uh, people, it's a, it's a big step, and I'm very proud that, uh, he, to have known him and to have been part of, that he's been part of my management team. Also, uh, we, our HR director's position is posted. The first closing was, uh, July twenty-seventh. We, uh, the way we advertised it, we're continuing to receive, uh, resumes, and we will continue to do that. At the end of the week, I'll take a look at what has come in, uh, with that group. Regarding GFL, I will tell you, we are documenting, uh, service complaints and that, in conversation with the council, and particularly the council president and the former city attorney. We did review what was necessary to break that contract if we need to, and that documentation, there is a process in place, and that documentation is being put together, and I can come back to council in our next meeting and, uh, give you a status of where we're at with that. Uh, I have no other items this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to keep interrupting, but, but Saturday, September first, is the first university football game in the, in the city of Southfield in its history, and it's, uh, LTU is having a football game right at the corner of Ten Mile and Northwestern. If you can attend, please do that. Next time, Byron, make sure your buddy's here so you can make all these announcements.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say, since we were talking about the new positions and stuff, one of the things that I consistently ask is that we, the whole council, would meet and discuss the upcoming positions, um, so that we would know what your plans are, and, um, you would know what we're looking for as well. I think that this is the opportunity for the city to take and learn, uh, exactly where the holes are, what kind, what, in what way we want to see improvements, where we can make improvements, and, um, then find out what's going on and how we can get the best candidate for the job. And we, the entire council doesn't know what the, um, where, where all of the holes are unless we have this full conversation, and, uh, I've been asking for us to put that on an agenda, so I was just hoping that it would come sooner rather than later, because again, my concern is that we're going to have a high turnover. I know that the retirees, there's a lot of retirees coming up this year and first part of next year, and we need to fill those gaps, and competition is very, very tight. All the cities want the best, uh, candidates that's out there, and if we don't have a plan, if we're not being proactive, we're going to end up getting what's left over. So I'm just asking that we would consider putting that on the schedule sooner rather than later, so that we could talk about this as a council.
And, and if I may, Mr. President, we have presented a substantial amount of information to the finance committee, uh, detailing by department, those employees who've dropped, eligible to retire, new hires, and we're happy to present that to the full council.
Thank you.
All right, I have, and obviously have been in discussion with Mr. Zorn about, um, about the staffing, and, um, he has mentioned to me, uh, every step of the way where we were with, with different positions, and, um, we will make sure council, the full council is, is constantly informed about, um, all the positions that, that are vacant, and our process in, in getting them filled. Is that it? Mr. Zorn?
Move your adjourn.
Uh, we got, uh, Madam Attorney? Nothing, okay. Madam Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
The treasurer is done?
Done.
Planner, assessor, engineer, schedule? Did, did we, did it go out, everyone, that we will be meeting, uh, with the school board on the eighth of October?
I will verify that.
Okay, I know they, they, we will have a joint meeting with the school board, and I think it went out by way of, um, Ms. Hawkins.
You called.
Hmm?
You called.
Oh, I did, okay. I did, and Ms. Hawkins, too, was the coordinator with them. Okay, all right, but it will, but that will be publicized, okay? If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.